Good evening. I'd like to call this January 17th, 2023, School Board Special Meeting with Public Hearing Work Session, Budget Public Hearing Number One and Budget Work Session Number One and Closed Meeting to Order. Ms. Goodell, could you please call the role?
Yes, Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Dr. Gould.
Here.
Dr. Ortiz.
Here.
Ms. Silverman.
Here.
And Ms. Teis.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could now have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Dr. Ortiz, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes? All those opposed say no? Okay, thank you. We have adopted the agenda. We're now at Agenda Item Number Two, Public Hearing for School Board Vacancy, and I'm going to read Section 2.01. In accordance with School Board Policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. And I have several speaker slips in front of me, and so I'll call the speakers in the order that they submitted the slips. And our first speaker is, and I apologize for any mispronunciations, Taher Kumar, and for candidate for School Board Vacancy. And please correct my pronunciation. Thank you. Please come to the podium.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to come over here. And my name is Taher Kumar. I recently moved to the U.S. with my family and settled in Falls Church. And the main reason of settling in Falls Church was I heard a lot of things about good schools, good administration, good people, and I'm happy that the information was correct. And before coming to the U.S., I served USAID Pakistan for 17 years in financial management capacity. And out of those 17 years, the last seven years as a chief accountant. So my main responsibilities were supervising the payment section, accounting section, payroll section. And like payment processing, accounting includes audit as well and budgeting. Budgeting means formulation of budgeting and then justification, execution of budgets, and then like if there is something, financial reporting is part of that one as well, right? And we also have different technical departments in USAID Pakistan like education, and I was responsible to monitor their financial aspects of those programs. Our main education program was managing the scholarship, merit and need-based scholarship, construction of advanced study centers in different universities, giving them the latest equipments for studies and scholarships for the students, and as well as the basic education programs for flood-affected areas. So these were the main portfolios education officers was working on those one. And I also worked there as an association president. That was a local employees' association. That was a bridge between like local employees and the management. In fact, USAID Pakistan was working under the umbrella of U.S. Embassy. So like there were 1,500 employees, and I was the president of that association to work for the common agendas and commonalities. And I also worked as a financial management advisory group member for CFO, Washington DC, USAID CFO. And that was a worldwide group. And our main responsibilities were formulate the financial policies and execute them and provide the financial expertise around the world. And while reading your website, when I saw the chapter of financial management, I was so excited that all these items, I worked there for the last 17 years, like procurement, payment processing, payroll processing. So that's why, and I also feel that this is my ethical responsibility to give or return to the society what I have learned during my career. So now I think it's time for me to serve the United States and this city and this society. So that's why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kumar. We appreciate you coming this evening. Our next speaker, again, for the public hearing for School Board Vacancy is Ms. Amy Murphy. Ms. Murphy?
Hi, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Murphy. And like some other people here, I submitted my application to become a member of the school board and fill the current vacancy. My application lists my qualifications, so I'm going to use these three minutes to introduce myself and tell you why I'd like to become a member of the board. My family moved here in 2016 from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. My husband Brian and I, we have two girls. One is in ninth grade and the other is in seventh. Like a lot of families who moved to Falls Church City, the main draw was the schools. So when one of my daughters was in second grade, it became clear that she was having trouble learning to read, despite otherwise being an excellent student. Luckily, her teacher identified the problem right away and led us on the path to getting her evaluated, which eventually led to a diagnosis of dyslexia. One day, when she was in class and she was wearing headphones to have a test read to her, another student turned to her and said, "Why do you wear the headphones? Is it because you can't read?" And so, still shy and a little bit taken aback, she didn't answer. Her teacher took her outside into the hall after the test. And although my daughter can't remember everything that she said, she remembers how kind she was. She remembers how her teacher lifted her up and then offered her a snack from her lunch. So the reason I'm telling you this is because I believe that to continue to have great schools, we have to support the needs of all kids, but also the teachers, the administrators, and the staff that are there to support them every day. My agenda for the coming year is simple. It's to listen and to learn before casting my vote. I know that there are some sensitive issues on the table. And if selected, I'd come in with an open mind and consider those issues from all the different angles. I want to make decisions that balance, that promotes balance and also advances equity. I mention equity because in addition to being a mother, a wife, the daughter of a public school teacher, I'm also a lawyer for the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. My cases take me to underserved communities across the United States. And so I am reminded of how lucky we are to have such a strong community and great schools, but that not all families are able to access them equally. Being a lawyer also gives me a great deal of experience bridging the gap between different points of view. It's with those principles in mind, listening, balance, and equity, that I look forward to the opportunity to serve with you over the next year in order to chart the path forward for our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. And then our final speaker for this portion of the agenda, again, on the Board Vacancy, is Mr. Jared Anderson. Mr. Anderson?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be considered for the vacant School Board seat from Phil Reitinger. I know that me and the other candidates are applying to fill his role, and I think I speak for all of us when I say that his role has big shoes to fill. My wife and I moved here, like many other families, for the schools and for the school community. And I'm a father of two boys at Mount Daniel, and I've seen firsthand the care and effort that the staff have put into our children's education. And I fully understand that we're a small community, and the success of our little city depends on everybody pitching in where they can, whether that's on the playground, in the classroom, or on the school board. So I want to serve where I can. I learned a lot about the school community while running for the School Board in 2021. And I can fully appreciate how much the schools in Falls Church are kind of held up as a gem in the community. Beyond just running for School Board, I've also tried to serve in other ways. I'm one of the room parents, one of the Benny Room Parents in my kindergartner's classroom. And I've volunteered at the HTG Games and have also volunteered at the library book sale. And I've enjoyed giving back to the community, and I will continue to do so. As a School Board applicant, I can bring various perspectives and expertise to the role. In addition to being the father of two young boys at Mount Daniel, I'm also the father of a child who receives special education services in our schools. I think that allows me to have the perspective of an important part of our community, those families who are receiving special education services and those with child special needs. And while no one person embodies all relevant perspectives, I can listen to other people's concerns, and I do not give pride of place to my own. I know the budget season has kicked off for y'all, and I've actually already started reviewing some of the appendices in the budget file that have been put together by Krista Michael here and Michelle Koppick. And crafting and passing a budget is a very important role for the School Board, and I hope to have the opportunity to dive in and work as part of a team with y'all. I previously ran for School Board and am fully committed to running this fall. I've watched every School Board meeting and try to write up summaries for part of the community that reads my newsletter. My understanding of the School Board, School Board's role, has evolved, and I can appreciate the difference between the oversight of the School Board for governance versus the oversight of operations by Dr. Noonan. I appreciate the opportunity to be considered as a potential team member to serve with you on the Falls Church City School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I think we have one more speaker. Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Okay, and our final speaker for this portion of the agenda is Ms. Bethany Henderson.
Good evening. Glad I found you all this evening. A little tricky downstairs. I'm Bethany Henderson. I'm glad to be here with you all this evening and grateful for the opportunity to share with you why I'm interested in School Board and serving on the School Board right now. I know y'all all received the applications that we submitted, so I'm not going to repeat that, what I said in there. I just want to share kind of a couple of things that I have learned over the course of my career as a nonprofit CEO, was serving on nonprofit boards and working very closely with numerous city governments, both in DC and around this country, that I think will be really relevant to serving on this board and the work that you do and the important work that we need in our schools. First is my job, my day job, is really about how do you digest, process, and intake vast amounts of information, data, variety of different opinions and interests and needs of stakeholders, often conflicting needs and interest of stakeholders, and the values and strategic plan of the organization. And cohere all of those to make the best decisions possible for the community and for the organization. And there's a huge analogy to that, right? We have a lot of different stakeholders in Falls Church City and in the schools that are important, our students, our teachers, our parents, our community members, our administrators. And all of them have different perspectives and different needs. And so figuring out how to integrate those, not necessarily to the consensus view, because there's rarely will reach consensus without many different stakeholders, but to outcomes that everybody can understand that are intentional, that are based in principle and that are based in the values and the strategy that the School Board and the administration have identified, is something I have a lot of experience doing those types of activities and something I'd be very interested in doing with our schools. Number two, and our schools are really personal to me. I've got two kids in the schools, as you know. My kids are both neurodivergent, so there are different needs that they have, which has been a whole new learning experience for me, kind of in learning the different opportunities and possibilities and expectations of the schools. My kids have been here since first grade. They're, I've now got my oldest is in high school. And so I've been able to work in and with the schools in a variety of different ways, as a parent volunteering classrooms. I just wrapped up Give Day, so you should be really proud of your middle schoolers. They packed 25,000 meals yesterday with some high schoolers' help. But really getting to work with and know the people in our school building. And that's one of the things I've learned along the way in my career as well, having crisscrossed the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, is the importance of getting to know the people that you are working with, the people that you are representing, and the people that you are supporting. And while I'm known for talking a lot, I also listen a lot. Listening is really how I learn, really listening to the people and listening for between the lines. So not just the words that are being said, but what they're really communicating and what the underlying needs are, and asking questions, right? Not assuming that I know or that my experience is a universalized experience. And the third thing that I'm really excited about, and I know a lot of people aren't excited about this, but I am, is really understanding the budget. I work with a lot of complex budgets. I've worked with city budgets in my day jobs for many years and really understanding how to move the levers and how to be a good steward of the money and understanding how to interpret the numbers and put them into the human impact, right? So it's not just about making the numbers work, that's important, but what do the numbers mean? And having the budget work in service of the community instead of in service of just the finances. So I appreciate you letting me share my experiences. It would be an honor to serve with you all. I know the other candidates are also fantastic. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Henderson. And again, thank you to all of our candidates for your time this evening. And I welcome you to stay, but we are-- If you want to learn about the budget-- No, but you're, please, you're also welcome to depart as well. But thank you all for your time this evening. This, we really enjoyed meeting you all. We did receive all of your credentials, but it's great to see put names with faces, so thank you very much again. And I did, I was remiss. I did want to publicly announce that we did have another candidate, Ms. Cho-Lay Lee. And Ms. Lee has withdrawn her application. So we have four applicants for this vacancy? Yes, yes, and, yes, and Mr. Harper as well. But today's morning announcement still had Ms. Lee's name in it. So Mr. Harper also withdrew. So we have four candidates now for this School Board Vacancy. Okay, we are going to move on now to Item Three of our agenda, Business Action and Information. And we're at 3.01, Update on Equity Work in Schools. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Downs. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Tonight, I'm going to turn it over quickly to Mr. Bates, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Santiago. But before I do that, I just wanted to make a quick statement that this is one of those opportunities where we get a chance to kind of see how the work of our equity focus is beginning to play out and also in the context of the new policy that you all have passed recently around equity. And so as you're hearing the presentation tonight, just for context, kind of keep in the back of your mind, Policy AB that you all have worked on and done beautifully with. And their presentation will hit some of that along the way. So with that, Mr. Bates?
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Good evening, Madam Chair Downs, Vice Chair Gould, and members of the board. So we are really excited for this opportunity to provide an equity update to you. Equity is something that we've done in Falls Church for a number of years, and I know it predates, you know, myself and Dr. Santiago. But over the past few years, we've really tried to laser in on some specifics with our equity work and really be targeted and focused in what we do. We've talked a lot about equity not being the work that we do, but what we live. And when you think about equity work, it really should be the fabric. I'm sorry, Ms. Minson. Is my three minutes? That was a quick three minutes. Ms. Minson's always on the job there. But, you know, as I was sharing, and we talk about this in our equity teams, in so much that you know you're doing equity right, and we want to move away from doing equity, but you know it's really grabbing hold when the work that we do equity is at the center of it. We always have students at the center of our work. But we'll talk a little bit about student data performance. We'll talk about the DEI policy that you all developed and then updated last year. We'll talk about some of the work that happens in our HR department. But you know equity is really grabbing a hold whenever it becomes the fabric without the thought of having to be intentional. So we're excited about that. So for tonight's presentation, we'll look at six focus areas. I'll take the lead on the first three areas, which starts with our equity journey and the audit in response that took place three years ago. We had an equity audit, well, actually about three and a half years ago. So we'll talk a little bit about that and how we responded. We'll also dig a little bit into Policy AB, which is our DEI policy that you all developed and pushed through or voted on a couple of years ago. And then equity by the number. So we'll dig just a little bit into student performance, but not too much. And I'll talk a little bit about our plan moving forward for sharing more detailed student performance numbers with you all. And then for the second portion of the presentation, we'll look at really how our equity work aligns with the strategic plan as we're building that culture of wellness, equity, and belonging, investing in our students and staff, and then focusing on our community as it relates to equity. So when we look at our journey, back in the spring of 2019, we consulted with an equity expert, Dr. Julian Williams, who conducted an equity audit. And a lot of this, of what he did was rooted in qualitative surveying of students, staff, and parents. And in doing so, he gathered a lot of information around kind of where we were as a division and where we needed to go. And moving forward from that, in the fall of 2019, I think it was October of 2019, Dr. Williams came before the board and provided an equity audit update, but also shared those findings with the board. And so what we've done for you is pulled out five pretty heavy hitters that we've been able to focus on really for the past year to 18 months since receiving those equity recommendations. The number one item we have listed there was that landing webpage, and we're proud to share that we do have an ongoing webpage that provides living resources for our staff and our community as it relates to equity. He also, in his recommendations, talked about the importance of curriculum reframing or developing curriculum and looking at the curriculum through an equity lens. And so that's something that we've done really for the last three years. But over the past year, we've taken a stronger focus on that. We've shared curriculum reframing guides with our CTOs. And then just in general, as our teams are meeting, what we've tried to do is move towards having conversations and making decisions with equity in mind. And so that's thinking about, are our students seeing themselves, their unique selves in the curriculum, in the stories that are being shared, in the assignments that are being done? If there are characters in stories, am I as a black male able to see myself in what I'm learning? Or identify, again, with characters? Or how are certain characters being depicted? Are there positive stories? Or are we seeing trends of negative stories? And so going into spaces, again, with that equity lens as we're making these curriculum decisions. He also talked about our diversity and recruitment plan. And so our Human Resources Department has worked closely with our equity, our division-level equity team, and has been really targeted over the last number of years with recruitment as it relates to diversity. One thing that we're proud to share is that it doesn't matter what position you may be, you know, applying for. We have an equity or multiple equity-related questions in our interview questions. And so whether you're on the operational side or a principal or an instructional leader at the school level or at the central office level, as we are reviewing applicants, as we are framing and developing questions, as we're pulling together panels, we are keeping that equity framing or mindset. Do we have diverse panel? Are there certain things, experiences, that lend themselves well? Not to just being a good fit and match for our school division, but they're also bringing a diverse perspective and understanding of what it, where we are and where it is that we want to go. And so we're proud of the work that our Human Resources Department has done. We've also worked at strengthening our partnerships with our HBCUs as well. Our professional development, Dr. Santiago, and, you know, please feel free to jump in if needed. But over the years, we have done microaggressions training. We've also done implicit bias training. One of the charges that Dr. Santiago has put forth is the cultural proficiency training. And all staff who come in will be exposed to and engaged in cultural proficiency training. And again, it's not just professional staff or it's not just instructional staff, but all staff coming in. One thing that we have weaved into the onboarding of new staff over the past couple of years is providing time in the schedule where we would provide them with our equity charges and expectations and then also introducing all new staff in the summer as they come into equity training. And then that fifth item there that the audit recommended was the Chief Diversity Officer position. And although we don't have that title, we have Dr. Santiago as our Director of Equity and Excellence, who oversees all of ESOL services and equity for the division. And that was something that Dr. Noonan put in his request to the board, and you all or the board at the time supported that, which allowed us to do some reorganizing within the Curriculum and Instruction and Achievement Department to ensure that we had a Director of Equity and Excellence. So we were proud to celebrate that. When we look at Policy AB, there's a number of charges that the board has set forth for Policy AB. What we wanted to do is really highlight four charges specifically that we have, we feel that has aligned to our work as we've engaged in equity. And we can talk more about this in the future. And then in an upcoming slide, I'll share a couple of updates and ask from the board as it relates to Policy AB. But the first thing that we included in here was just ensuring access to a high-quality education for all of our students. And that's something that we have committed to and something that we want to continue to do. And when we talk about all students, we also have to keep in mind that we have students who do need more. And so as we are making decisions and as we are looking at access and opportunity, what do the data say about students who have been traditionally marginalized or students who have traditionally fallen into those gap groups? How are our decisions aligning with the charges of the board under this policy? The second item we included here was the supports needed to address the racial disparities for students so that they can be successful. And a lot of this gets into our MTSS work. You've heard in various presentations, whether it's an ESOL presentation or a data presentation, we will often talk about supporting students by name and by need. So ensuring that we're providing teachers and staff with the right supports so that they know exactly what the students need, not just from an academic standpoint, but from a social-emotional standpoint or work that we may be aligned, may be able to align what we're doing with community efforts and needs that span outside or beyond the classroom. And then the final two that we included here, this top one here talks about the expectations that you've outlined in the policy, where we would really narrow in on the differences and the disparities of certain groups of students. And so in doing that, expecting that there would be an annual update or report to the School Board that would outline our specific gaps that might be experienced by certain groups of students. And so that's something that we're also prepared to do. So what I will share in advance, whenever we look at the data slides that were provided, we didn't include, or I didn't include, specific gap slides. I can, as we walk through that, I can outline that there are some clear gaps. But what the thought was for this presentation was that we provide more of an overview of the equity work. And-- the equity work and specific data points around gaps. We can include those in upcoming presentations because, and I'll share this actually in another slide, so I'll, I'll repeat myself just a bit. But we have two presentations that we have started to do annually, which is our spring presentation of data and our fall presentation of data. And I'll talk a little bit more about that and provide some rationale as to why we elected to not include like a deeper dive of the gaps in the gap disparities with specific slides. And then the final item that we included here, again, that gets to, into our H R work, which is so important and aligns with our strategic plan, but securing recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce. We are in a, a great position in, in our school division to recruit and retain some of the most talented staff, whether, again, we're talking about support staff or professional staff, instructional staff. And so as we are attracting some of the best and brightest, whether they're new, if we're talking teachers, whether they're brand new teachers, or we every year are able to bring in veteran staff or veteran teachers who have many years of teaching experience in various divisions, whether locally or, or not, non-local. But again, what are we doing to be targeted and intentional in supporting the, the recruitment of staff that mirror our students and that do have the diverse perspectives and understanding of equity and diversity as it relates to the work that we're doing in our school division? So this slide here, it, it speaks to that previous point that I was making around expectations that the school board has for us as it relates to presenting data, specific to gap data. And so you can see here that we have two presentations that we do that are specific to data. And the first being in the spring, where it's more of a general overview because we know we don't have the scrub data from the state, the S O L data. And so what we can do is typically we'll provide kind of like a, a preliminary overview of kind of where we are, and that gives you some insight or, or a little peek into what we can anticipate might come, come through over the summer. But we, in that presentation, always caution the board, the public and the staff in remembering that this, in that spring presentation, that's, those aren't the final data. And the hope is that any, once the data is scrubbed by the state and it comes through, that we would see an uptick. And then we also provide an update on the types of assessments that we are administering to the students. And then in the fall is where we do that much deeper data dive, where we look at the final unscrubbed data. And then we also look at other performance metrics and we get into our participation data. We also get into our I B numbers. We'll have our graduation data at that time. And then we take a, a dive into the F C C P S student and what it is that we are striving for as we are developing that profile of a false church city public school student. So all of that brings us to that final box that was recently added. And as I was looking at the policy a little more thoroughly and reflecting on the presentation, Dr. Santiago, Santiago and I met, and we also shared with Dr. Noonan. We don't, or haven't in the past, provided an annual equity report to the school board. And so our thought would be that falling in, within the guidance of the timeline of when the policy was revised in May of 2022, it might, it might benefit or behoove all of us if Dr. Santiago and I worked on developing over the next few months, an actual equity report that did include some of the data that is outlined in, in the board policy. So attendance data, discipline data, some of the data that we might not include in a data presentation to the community, but we could put that in, in, in equity report, and this would begin the, the annual equity report. And then the ask would be that one of our board members even give us some guidance and, and note specifically, we could provide updates on here's where we are, but give us some guidance on what we would want to see or what you all would want to see in this annual equity report that would go to the board. In addition to that, we would still include gap data in the annual data presentations that Dr. Wylerman comes to the board with. But the thought was to, to include the gap data in this presentation when we're giving in like an, an general update of our equity work, might not be the, the best time to do that because we know we're going to want to dive into, into that data a little more. So.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bates. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm going to go ahead and volunteer Dr. Dimmick to help you, to help you if you wanted bounce some, get some feedback from the board in terms of that annual report, because Dr. Dimmick was, was really our author of that policy in the first place. So that would be great.
Excellent, excellent. And.
Sorry, Dr. Dimmick.
And, and so just a final note on that, because I know this is, this is new information that has just kind of emerged based upon our thinking over the past, you know, 72 hours or so. But the initial thought was in starting this report, we would go through, we would go through the policy and just look at those charges and, and really be able to speak specifically in the report to each one of the charges that are in that, that D E I report. So we would, it would just be nice and clean and easy to follow. And then the final note would be, kind of put a, a bug in Trish Minson's ear just to, just to make sure that we're also in, in guidance and, and within parameters for any data that, you know, we would want to, to share, to making sure that it's not personally identifiable and whatnot. Okay, so let's take the next few minutes just to, to jump into the data. And so this, these data were shared with you by Dr. Wylerman back in, in the fall. And I want to share, share this again as, as a precursor, just to orient you with how well we did. And what we celebrated in the fall was that we are approaching in, in some areas at pre-pandemic, our pre-pandemic numbers with our S O L pass rates. And, and you can see as a compare, comparison to the state, how many points our students were on average above. But if you kind of, you know, focus on that middle column there, you can see that in the aggregate, we're, we're between 87 and 92 for our overall performance numbers. And then we shared these data with you. So when we, Dr. Wylerman did back in the fall, so they may look familiar. So again, without including separate gap data slides in this presentation, if we think back to that middle column that we celebrated last fall, and we look at our traditionally marginalized groups, we'll see that our black students, well, they did make, they, they did drop by nine points. So that's a target area that we really need to look at. But in these other areas here, I mean, you'll see in the upcoming slides, a number of areas where we did make gains and, and our students made significant gains. So our students with disabilities made a great gain of a 12-point bump up, our multilingual learners, a 15-point bump, and our economically disadvantaged, a five-point bump. But again, not including those individual gap slides. If we think back to where we were in the aggregate between that 87 to 92, so let's just, as a kind of a mean average, say we're at like an 89, we don't need a gap slide to see that tho- those kids are in the gap. These groups of students are on average between, on the lower end, 35, to on the higher end, 12 points below where the aggregate performance was for all students in F C C P S. As we look at mathematics, again, we celebrated our students who are traditionally marginalized with the gains that they made from 2021, 2020, 21 to 2021, 22, with our black students making a nine-point gain, students with disabilities, a seven-point gain, multilingual learners and economically disadvantaged, making 12-point gains respectively. But again, if we're drawing that comparative analysis of a mean aggregate score of around 89, we can see on the low end, again, we're between, you know, 30 to 35 points in, in the gap. So we have work to do. And that's not something that, it, it's not a, it, it's not a secret that, that we have work to do because we have kids that, as great as we're doing and as much celebrating as we need to do, or that we should do based upon the great work that our staff has done and, and how responsive we've been, and the fact that as we outlined in the fall, our students in our traditionally marginalized groups have made significant gains in that, in that year post-COVID, they're still in the gap. And then when we look at science, we celebrated our black students who made a 23-point jump, students with disabilities, an 11-point jump, multilingual learners in science, a 17-point jump, and our economically disadvantaged students made a seven-point jump for science in particular. We were at 88, 88 points in our mean aggregate. And so again, we can see on the lower end, upwards of 45 points below, and on the higher end, about 15 points. So we see the disparity between where, where are some of our traditionally marginalized students are falling. And then we included this here because we just wanted to remind you that there, you didn't see slides for history or writing because we were able to get a waiver for those tests during that COVID year of 2020, 21, and we were able to do our performance-based assessments for those. And then this last data slide here is our, our WEDA slide, WEDA data, and again, celebrating the growth of our, our students. And Dr. Santiago can speak to this much more eloquently than, than I can, but if I remember correctly, you know, she had shared in her previous presentation to the board, our primary focus for our multilingual learners is that we're looking at the growth that they're making as they progress through the WEDA levels. I mean, we always want to celebrate passing an S O L for this particular group of students, but that's not our primary goal and our primary focus. A number one is ensuring that they are making progress through those WEDA levels, and then we also want to look at their exit, their rate of exiting ESOL services. But we highlighted a couple of data points there, or a few, three data points there that we wanted to remind you of. And so when we look at the data, what, what is the data telling us about opportunities for growth in false church city public schools as it relates to equity and, and student performance, our D E I work, the work that we're, we are doing as it supports the policy that our school board has adopted, and our recruitment and retention? Well, from a student performance standpoint, all of our gap groups experienced growth, and so that's something that definitely needs to be celebrated. And we're, we're going to continue to do that and commend our, our fabulous instructional staff and support staff for that. But, you know, equity work, when, when we engage in it, it, it tells us to be honest with the data and to call out what needs to be called out. And so truthfully, we can only do so much celebrating when we know that we have students who are, although they have made some gains, as, as far as 40 to 45 points to 15 points in the gap as it relates to the aggregate. And we can't use the, we can't use the excuse that we are such a high-performing school division. As Dr. Noonan has shared with, with us before, we, we celebrate the fact that we are the highest performing when you look across the board at, at the tested categories. On average, we are the highest performing school division. But that doesn't, that doesn't take away the fact that we still have to elevate up for, for certain students because not all students are experiencing the success that, that some students are. And so that's what the data's telling us. Some of the things we can do to respond, increase our inclusion, our, of gap groups in acceleration and enrichment programs. We know now that there, there's a lot of research and, and evidence that supports that the continued cycle of remediating kids oftentimes leads them to fall further behind. And so what can we do to provide acceleration and enrichment for students, all students? And then support on the parent's side, parent and education programs, and then resources and support for extended learning at home. And so those are some of the things that we know we need to look at. And so if, with that being said, what we can do is pause for questions, and then once we answer your questions or provide clarity on anything that you might need clarity on Dr. Santiago will lead us through the second part of the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bates. It's very informative and interesting. Anyone have any questions? Yes, Ms. Tyson?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you. I just thought that was really helpful and it was a really clear explanation of, of where we stand. And I just appreciate the balance of acknowledging what we do have to celebrate without, you know, hiding or making excuses for the growth we still have to, to strive for. So I just thought it was a really well-balanced. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Dimmick?
Thanks very much. Thanks for your presentation. I'm enjoying your presentation. I want to, if you could go back a slide, I want to ask some questions about that last slide. So I would love to hear your thoughts on how to increase inclusion of the gap groups? And what would it, what would we need? Writing new budget questions. What would we need if we wanted to provide more parent support and education programs? What would we need if we wanted to provide resources to support extended learning at home? So if these are areas where we can grow, what do you envision and what would we need?
Yeah, so I think, so for your, for your first question, we are, we're positioned very well being a pre-K I B school division. And Dr. Noonan has shared, you know, many times on that, the fact that we already like to, you know, believe, not believe, confident that we, we do offer students more because as our teachers are looking at the standards and, and aligning the curriculum, the lessons to the curriculum that they're developing, there is also the I B component, which takes our students deeper and requires more, and the level of engagement, we believe, is, is much greater. And so the fact that a student sitting in a standard classroom is being offered a, a greater level of engagement in, in. and, and deeper learning, I think that, that supports the acceleration. I think to the, the point that was, was mentioned earlier, we have to look at, we have to look for opportunities in the classroom to support the learning of, of our students. And so, in days of old, there, there may have been, again, the remediation where we're pulling a student out and the student is getting either a small group or a one-on-one after school or before school or when, you know, during that class. But, what are things that the teacher is able to do in the classroom to support the students and level up? And so, that can be targeted small group, or it can be individualized instruction. So, those are some of the things, I think, you know, initially as it, as it relates to acceleration and, and enrichment. And then, there's also, there, we know that sometimes there, there is a benefit to offering students support during non, during, or outside of the school day. And so, we do have, or and want to continue to look for opportunities for additional academic support for students, whether it's on a late bus day or, you know, you know, another point in time during the day.
So, yeah, I can speak specifically to things that we're working on for providing parent support and education programs. So, currently, we have, our parent liaisons are working with the tech team to create a series of parent workshops for families who kind of need some, some support in basic computer skills. So, that's one thing that we're working on, supporting families that, that need that support in order to build their capacity to, to help their students at home, but also, you know, their own growth support. And then, in addition, both of our parent liaisons are attending workshops with Fairfax County's parent liaison. So, they'll be going through a train-the-trainer to, for their, their PEP program. It's called Parent Education Program, so that they'll be able to facilitate that program here as well with families. So, those are two particular things that we'll be providing to have support for specific families in need of that type of support. And that's the most concrete answer I can give at this moment.
Vice Chair Gold?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the, the presentation so far. And I think, I think to Ms. Tyson's point, echoing, I think it's good that we acknowledge where we're doing well, where we're not. But, I think with, with equity work, it's, it's really what we're doing, not necessarily how we're doing sometimes. And I think it's great that we have that opportunity. I would encourage in data presentations, which I'm sure Dr. Dimick, I, I'm probably echoing something that she's mentioned earlier, but making sure we do cohort-based if we're going to do longitudinal, which I think we did a great job of not focusing on state comparisons. You only did one slide, which is great because it's really about how we're doing with our own district. And longitudinal might be more than just two data points, especially given the twenty-twenty year was, as Dr. Wyman said, is kind of a tough year to compare against. And I'd also suggest having this comparison to some of our other groups in the district, just to make sure that we're seeing how we did grow in other areas with our other student groups, not just the marginalized groups, just to, again, look at, it's not a baseline comparison by any means, but it's really just how we're doing with other groups. And again, I think it's, it's, we need to make sure that we're okay with this. And I think as a board and as a community, we're all, we're all fine with acknowledging where we're not, and also, we're all great with celebrating where we are. And so, we can do both, and, and we need to do both.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gold.
And I'll just say, in point of celebrating, I know it's only just two data points, but, you know, I, I just wanted to just make note of, of Dr. Santiago. I know you've worked a lot with our ESOL community and, you know, just to see the growth among our, our English language learners and the stats is terrific. So, great job. And, and actually, let me, I, I was remiss in not acknowledging Principal Appreciation Week, so I also want to put it out there, thank you to our principals who support all of our learners, and all, and, and our ESOL teachers who, you know, you can see the hard work that's been really giving us some great results. And I echo Vice Chair Gold, I think to even have some more data points would be great, but what's up there is terrific, and we have some work to do. And we also have some more presentation to, to move forward on. So, I think, are we turning it back over to you, Dr. Santo? Okay, thank you.
Okay, excuse me. So, for the, the next several focus areas, the last three focus areas, we'll kind of walk through what we've done over the past three-plus years and, and align that to our strategic plan. So, when we think of, excuse me, building a, a culture of belonging, we're really thinking about our equity journey over the past several years. And, you know, at the heart of all of this is really creating a culture inside the division where all people, staff and students feel cared about and feel like this is a place where they can, they can be, but they can also thrive in their work and their learning experiences here. So, this has been a really rewarding journey for Falls Church City Public Schools to grow and be able to recognize the people and the self-reflection of this work that we've done over the past several years, but also increase the transparency in the work that we've done and the work that we're doing. So, along with building a culture of belonging over the past several years, we've started an equity newsletter that goes out each month. It goes out to the division, and then it goes out to the community as well. Inside that newsletter, we try to highlight things that are happening across the division, provide a space in that newsletter that helps, a space of learning and growing and that, and then highlight things that are happening for the school board, things that are happening in, in each of the schools. We've, our, our elementary schools recently went through a book audit in which they, all the teachers reviewed their classroom books to make sure that there was representation of different experiences and different life, lives that are happening for each of our students. So, there's a space for each student to find something that they connect with, and they can see themselves in what they're reading. And if, if there weren't, then we are filling those gaps to make sure that all of our children have a space to, to enjoy reading and engage with reading in, in a way that they feel seen and recognized. Over the past year and a half, I've been providing cultural proficiency training to all, all staff of Falls Church City Public Schools. We've been going through a small group face-to-face training for self-reflection. For the past two-plus years, maybe three years now, we've been doing the Our History Matters Initiative, highlighting each month that's celebrated, and then highlighting new information, events that are happening across the divi-, across Northern Virginia and the area, and then things that are happening online, so people can engage with things where they're able to engage with things. We also added on to Our History Matters, we added Our Story Matters, and we highlight staff who, who their lived experiences follow in line with the month that's being celebrated. So, we highlight those staff internally and externally. They write their stories about who they are, and we share them. We're also doing that for all of the, the major religions that are celebrated. So, a staff member who celebrates that religion writes an email about what that religion means, what's the background to it, but also how their family celebrates that religion, and that's sent out to staff. And that's, people really like that. We've been working on curriculum reframing for the past several years, and really just supporting people and thinking about when you're teaching, when you're choosing resources, look at these resources through a different lens. Like, not only does this meet your content standards and your SOL standards, but is it, is it perpetuating a, a negative stereotype of somebody? If it is, then you have to address that within your classroom, or you need to not select that resource. And so, just really having that conversation of, of does this resource perpetuate a negative stereotype for people or provide a negative experience for others, it really starts opening people's eyes and having more self-reflective conversations about what you're seeing and seeing things in a different light to be able to provide students with a better experience. We've also been doing school board resolutions. You all have been doing school board resolutions for each of our months, which has been a really nice addition. And then, the following two bullets are bullets specifically from the Strategic Plan for Wellness Equity and Belonging, and that we're ensuring all stakeholders understand how to navigate FCCPS systems and provide equitable access, and fostering a culture of belonging empowerment for staff, students, staff and students to strengthen our caring community. Our next section is investing in our people, our staff and students. So, in this section, really thinking about, we have so many different people, staff and students and our community who are coming to us day in and day out with different lived experiences and different, different wants of their outcomes. So, how do we support them, but also provide space for that growth and opportunity for them? So, while our function in a school division is certainly on education, at the background of that is, is the adults that make it work, whether it's operations, whether it's instruction, it, it's adults that make the machine work. And while we're here for students, we also have to ensure that our staff is, is well-cared for and invested in as well. So, thinking about how we're investing in this slide, mostly on supporting our students, this, this year Valerie Hardy and, and Lindsay Jacobs, our new counselor at the high school, took a, a bus full of students to the Alconza College Fair at George Mason University. So, Alconza is a Hispanic college, it's a college fair for Hispanic students. So, it's a really, it's a really special place for students to go and have an experience, learning about colleges of interest that are, that's for them. For, I mean, it's just a space for them to feel safe and feel engaged in participating in that college fair. This is the first time that we've brought a group of students to Alconza. It was a great experience for, for the adults and for the students to be able to go and participate in that, and it's certainly something that we'll keep engaging with each year.
I kind of, I kind of do want to add. Now, and, and, and why I feel compelled to add is, is because I do have an experience with the Alconza College Fair, and, and when Jen and I had initial conversations about it, you know, you, you can't help but ask the question, like, so who are we, who are we having discussions with about college? And so, we should be having discussions with all students about colleges. But, when we then get into the access and the opportunity, what I learned as, as a principal was that there were certain segments of my student population that had never been on a college campus. And I, I had to ask, well, you know, why, you know, why not? And, and not so much why not, but what can I do to provide that experience? And so, this was an opportunity for us to say that, and, and again, in my experience, you know, whenever I kind of looked into this opportunity, and I was told that, you know what, if you want to bring a ninth grader, bring a ninth grader. If you want to bring a tenth grader, bring a tenth grader. And so, in, in meeting with the students and talking with Dr. Santiago, you know, we felt that it was very important, no matter what the age, no matter what your GPA is, you need to go onto a college, a college campus and experience what it's like to spend a day on, you know, at a university, and talk to admissions officers, and ask them questions, and just be able to engage in that experience that so many other students have. And, you know, one of the interesting things is that some of our students have not had conversations about what might need to be done, or how they might access the next stage of their educational career, simply because no one's asked them, or because they just didn't think about it. They, they thought that it wasn't accessible. And so, the things like, or, or opportunities like the Alconza College Fair helps to break down some of those misperceptions and barriers or insecurities that kids may have about themselves because they just never experienced it. I'm done.
I do. You're, it's so, it's close to your heart, so I had to let you. So, the other, the other thing to shout out about the Alconza College Fair is that, in addition to that, Sherry Mural is our college and career specialist at the high school, and she's just been incredibly responsive and just has done a really wonderful job. Every time I reach out to her with something that I've learned or something, I'm like, hey, can you put this up? And she's like, oh, I already have it. So, just today, I sent her, I sent her a thing about scholarship opportunities from the Hispanic Student Foundation, or Hispanic Scholar Foundation. She's like, it's already on there, but I'll make sure that I email it out to, to the group and I find specific students that it applies to and make sure that they apply for it. So, I was like, great. She's just really done a wonderful job. So, when we talked about the Alconza College Fair, she was on top of it. She booked the bus. She did all the coordination of everything. She, she made sure she talked to every student that qualified, that could go to it, and she was just on top of it. So, huge shout out to Sherry because she's doing a really, really nice job. We also are participating and have been for many years now, the Early Identification Program, which is a program through George Mason University for students who are, would be the first-generation student in their family to go to college. If they, if they're accepted to the program, they're accepted in their eighth-grade year. They participate in student mentoring throughout their high school career. Throughout the summer, they go to kind of a prep program, but then it's also a really engaging way to learn about other careers. And if they maintain a two-point-five GPA, they have, they have access to, to guaranteed admission to Nova. And if they have above a two-point-five, a three-point-five, they have guaranteed admission to George Mason University and an opportunity to have a full scholarship there. GMU also has received a new endowment and, and grant opportunity which will bring EIP students tuition down to, to basically about a thousand dollars a year. So, it's an incredible opportunity for our students to get into. And so, Matt Sowers is leading that work for us this year, and he's done a really great job at creating now a screener that every seventh and eighth grade student will fill out, so that we know right away who is a possible first-generation student to go to college, so that we can target students and make sure that we have as many students as qualify to be into EIP. Because to me, if we have students who qualify at being in EIP and they're not in EIP, then we, I've let this down. So, like, that's, it's just, it's a gift of, of a future that we're not giving. Our MTSS program, which is led by Julie Macarena, she's, over the past several years, has really changed the way in which we do MTSS. We have incredible MTSS lead teachers at each school that are leading that work and ensuring that when we're having conversations about students, they're data-based conversations, but not feelings-based conversations, so that we're really identifying what type of support students need and providing that to them. Recently, we have a, what's, we have a racist incident response framework, not something you really want to have to have, but really something good to have if you need it. So, we do have a strong framework for that now, which is grounded in research. And luckily, we have some lovely people in our division that are trained in restorative justice practices. So, Sarah Tennyson came recently and spoke with you about that. Seea Knight is also trained in restorative justice practices, and that's a large part of what the response framework includes. Typically, that is something that you have, that we do when something has happened, but in order to create a caring community and to invest in our students, we really have trained a lot of our elementary's teachers to participate in responsive classroom procedures. Like, if you have younger students, you might have heard about morning meeting. So, morning meeting is a great opportunity to build community with your students and to really set the expectations and build a space where you're in a circle and having really good conversations with students at a young age. I also did it with my middle schoolers to start each of my middle school classes when I taught ESOL. So, morning message slash, like, beginning of the class message is just a really great opportunity to create those structures and, and have a, a safe space for students to share and be a part of their learning. Mr. Bates is also, Mr. Bates, myself, and, and Dr. Swanson are a part of the DMV Collaborative, and we recently hosted them to share with them our, our equity journey. And that was a good, that was a good time.
Can I just, yeah, so, to the DMV Collaborative, to that, that piece, yes, it was, it was, it was a unique and, and great opportunity for us to meet with leaders from other school divisions in not just Northern Virginia, but also Maryland and the district, and for us to share the work that we are doing around equity, but then also learn what they're doing around equity. And it's always nice when you can share the work that you're doing and others say. And it's always nice when you can share the work that you're doing, and others say, wow, that's impressive. So, you know, I wanted to, to kinda capitalize on that point. And then just, I don't, the restorative justice practices, that, it's important to kinda highlight or note how that intersects with equity work, but then also how it intersects with being responsive to students, because teenagers, students will sometimes choose to engage in a behavior that offends others, whether it was just mean, intentional, or whether they lacked an understanding of what the impact would, you know, might be. The restorative, it's important to intersect our restorative justice with discipline and with equity work, because we wanna look for opportunities for growth, learning, understanding, and sensitivity, and that's what we've been able to do by tri- triangulating the three. Because sometimes, things may happen where, when there's an expectation that discipline is administered, and that needs to happen. But it's also important that the, the offended have an opportunity to voice or share how that has impacted and caused harm to them, and then the person who has done that really needs to experience and have a, at least, we need to provide a venue and an opportunity for the person who has offended to have an understanding of how what you have done has offended someone else, as opposed to discipline, separate, or discipline, remove, and not get to the root of some of these things that continue to happen, that we know we need to put an end to. And we can't fully address it if we don't have some, some teaching and learning and understanding around what, what's happening, or what has happened. And so, I just wanted to, to highlight that, because I know not all places are doing, doing that work, or they're including that in, in the work. And so, it, it's important, if we're gonna move along the continuum of equity and inclusiveness, then that's a key. The responsive, not just the responsive classroom, but that restorative justice is, is key.
So thinking about investing in our people, more on the staff side, the things that we've done here are develop our equity team. So we do have a division-level equity team, which I've talked about in the past, which is comprehensive of representatives across each of the school buildings and operations. So I do wanna highlight that earlier, we talked about all the things in HR, and not only is HR engaged in this work, but Amy Hall has, has been one of our members on the Equity DLT, and Amy is our Director of HR, and I know that for the public. She's been a part of the Equity DLT for, since we started the DLT, and she's been incredibly engaged. She's very good about any time the operations team meets, she's always giving updates about what's happening on our team. So it's just really nice to have a team that, that is representative of the entire division, but fully committed to the work that we're doing. And so that does lead into that's what, with our commitment to increase diverse teaching and professional staff, and we've really taken a lot of, a lot of work towards, towards that. We've had, we've opened conversations with, as William mentioned earlier, HBCUs. Amy sends out recruiting opportunities to the whole staff to be able to travel to them or participate them virtually, and just really work on ways in which we can recruit the best diverse and best teaching staff for all of our students, and the best professional staff for our, for our division. We've recently added on to our pathway to education with a, with an agreement with the Northern Virginia Community College, and, you know, our existing relationship with UVA and Virginia Tech to support even more teacher, even more professionals, even more support staff, even more staff across the division with their growth opportunities and access to growth opportunities. I think, you know, even in our development of the strategic plan, there's been a really focused effort on gathering the voices of all, but, but there's been a focus on ensuring that the voices of those that aren't typically heard are heard. So typically, if you're a part of a group that's voice isn't really heard very often, you, you really stop saying things, because nobody's listening. So it takes a lot of work to, to step back from that and have people under, like, have people feel like they're being heard again. So it's, it's not a quick change to just get people to start talking to you again, and I think we've been taking a lot of steps across the division to, to make people feel like all of their voices are valid and heard. The other night, or not the other night, the other day, and our Equity Division Level Team, Miriam Schmoller, who is a teacher at Oak Street Elementary School, and a member of our DLT, brought up a really great idea that, that her and Jeremy are going to start at Oak Street, is that she felt like teachers needed a safe space to come to, like, their equity team members, and, and have a space to talk about, hey, this is something that happened in my class, and I didn't really know how to handle it. What are some options? Like, what should I have done? What can I do? What are some ideas? So they're gonna start having those opportunities for teachers to come to their team and, and have a space to ask those questions, and really being able to empower people to ask hard questions, like, put yourself in a vulnerable space of, something happened in my class, and I didn't really know how to handle it. What do I do? What are some ideas? Because none of us have 100% of the answers, but when we put more of our heads together, we'll have a better answer and option to support our teachers. So I'm really, that was a really wonderful idea of Miriam's, I'm really proud of her, and we're hoping that, you know, that we can grow that into other spaces as well. So we're working on implementing a system-wide PD plan. That's, this is, the last two are a part of the strategic plan, so implementing a system-wide PD plan that's responsive to the needs of all employees. So we've already taken great action towards that. And then I think recruiting and retaining diverse, highly qualified staff is just, I think that's an ongoing thing that we should always have as part of our goals and focus. Last section. So building our community. So as a school division, we're built and service to our community and to ensure that the students that come through our, our, our schools are productive, positive members of our community, and that we serve our community in that sense. So in that vein, we're, you know, we're, we're working to build and strengthen structures that create a system for families to feel like they're a part of FCCPS, and actively engage the community to understand what their needs are, and be able to respond to those needs by breaking down barriers. So in that vein, we have parent liaisons. Thank you to the school board for that. We have one and a half school liaisons for the division, and it's, it's already been remarkably supportive of, of having both of those people to support the division and to support the Family Resource Center. So the Family Resource Center is, it is very busy. Our parent liaison in there is working with, is working with families pretty much all day, non-stop, supporting them in, in various needs, whether it's, you know, their personal needs and what they need to, to have a supportive day, or how to support their students more productively. So they're pretty great. Recently, thank you to Valerie Hardy and Amanda Ronco and Matt Sowers, and then the big thanks goes to Deng for, for adding on the Zoom interpretation add-on. So anytime we have any type of informational meeting or anything via Zoom, we can hire an interpreter, and that's, we can now have interpreted Zoom sessions, which is pretty great. We have Language Line, which the, the increased use of Language Line has been really wonderful over the past several years. Dr. Swanson recently pulled some data to kind of answer some, some markers inside the strategic plan of how we're breaking down barriers and supporting families. So Language Line has been a really helpful tool in order to do that as well. I didn't add that. The addition of Class Tag, which is a big shout out to John Brett and Steve Knight. They've been doing really great work in getting schools and student, families and teachers to use Class Tag and break down communication barriers that way. We've been having increased IB information sessions, so there was a, there was a big, you know, response from the community and the strategic plan-focused groups that people wanted to understand IB more. And so that has been a response from the IB coordinators across the division to provide more information sessions, make that more accessible. There's resources on the website that are a little bit more layman-friendly for understanding IB. And then over the last part there, overcoming barriers to effective communication, including language accessibility and tech issues, is coming straight from the strategic plan, and his work that, that we're, several of us are leading across the division.
Thank you so much, Dr. Santiago. It was very thorough and informative, and it's, it's great to see all that we're doing to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Silverman.
Hi, thank you for the great presentation here. I'm in the Miriam Schmoller Fan Club, which is a very crowded club, and just wondering if that is school-wide right now, or if it's system-wide at this point, or what, what the plans are in expanding that?
So it's just school-wide. She just thought of the idea in our meeting two weeks ago, so we met later on to talk about what that might look like and how we might start that. So it's just in like, the beginning stages of starting.
Thank you. It'd be amazing if we can grow that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, so I think we're hopeful that that might become a model for us to use across the division, because, you know, one thing we've, we've learned in, in engaging staff in conversations, that, you know, whether it's, how do I respond to an incident, or something that may have been said in my classroom at like, midstream, I'm in the flow of teaching, and a student says something, and I just don't feel comfortable addressing it, or whether it's engaging in, engaging a team in say, curriculum reframing, something more formal. We found that oftentimes, you know, for, for the teachers in, in the room, oftentimes teachers wanna be perfect, and we, we become very concerned and almost feel an anxiety that we may say the wrong thing, or we may respond in, in the wrong way, especially when it comes to equity, whether it's something around, you know, race or gender identity. And so, what we've really been trying to, to do and working with staff is give them that reminder, just to always approach with care and sensitivity and empathy, and, you know, you, you might say the wrong thing, or you may on, upon reflecting, realize that you could have approached that in a different way, but the bottom line is, like, are you present and available in there when a kid needs you at that point in time? And what we would never wanna see is, because of our discomfort, we allow something to happen or something to go unaddressed, because we were, because we were too uncomfortable with, in that moment in time, leaning in. So we're hoping that that would be a model.
That makes sense, because oftentimes, in that one moment of time, you might not come up with the right solution, or the best solution, the perfect solution, as a teacher wants to be in that perfection mode. But, you know, having, you know, the other people to bounce ideas off of, I think, is great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just, go ahead.
I have a comment, a quick question, and then a clarifying question. And I just channeled my best Phil Reitinger by prefacing what I was about to say. So that was a comment about the, the Alconza anecdote, but also just the outreach. I think overall, it's great to hear the, us utilizing our small city, and all the examples and anecdotes of that individual outreach that you all were mentioning. I think that's great, that we can not just identify the students on a chart, like we saw in the last part of the presentation, but also reach out and provide access, physical access to different resources to send, you know, opportunities. So that's great to hear, because I think that's what we pride, and that's why, as we heard from the speakers in the beginning, why a lot of people move to the city. Clarifying question, the DMV, DMV group that met, what's the organizing body that pulls you all together? Or is it just a network that you all connect with?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's a formal but informal group of director level and assistant superintendent level instructional leaders who collaborate on a, on a routine basis. So I, I, I think similar to other groups, oftentimes, you have folks who are in leadership positions, who look for opportunities to grow and learn from other folks who are doing similar work in, in other divisions, and so, one reaches out to another, and that's kinda how it grew organically. But it, it's grown to focus on professional development, on learning, on research-based practices, and sharing, sharing of best practices from one organization to the next.
That's great, yeah. Yeah, because I think some of those groups are usually state-based, or they're too national, and it doesn't have that, that regional feel, so that's great. And then the only, the clarifying question was on slide 15. I think it was your second to last bullet, it said, building a culture of belonging, and you mentioned ensuring all stakeholders understand how to navigate the system to provide equitable access. Can you expand on slide, or 15, page 15, I'm sorry, in the PDF? Yeah, that's it, that's it. The second to last bullet, can you expand on what that means to ensure all stakeholders understand?
Sure. So that is straight from the strategic plan, and so, so stakeholder, students, staff, families. So part of the things that, that we talked about in the strategic plan, is that people might not always know how to navigate the system, because you're speaking to school. And I know how to navigate school systems, I've worked in school systems, so I have a level of, oh boy. I have a level of knowledge, I didn't turn it on, a level of knowledge about the school system that kinda supported how I navigated it with my own children in a much different way than like, my friends who aren't teachers, let alone people who, who might not, English might not be a comfortable language for them. So how do we provide equitable access to the same level of navigating the system that I might have, or that Dr. Noonan has for his family? Because I might be able to access things in a way, because I know the system, much easier, but I might be able to pave an easier path for my children to certain things than others who don't have the same background now as did I have. So how do we level that playing field to make sure that like, all of the systems of Fall Sturgis City Public Schools are equally and equitably accessible to all people? But I'll, I'll also defer to you both. Thank you.
Ms. Teich?
There we go. Thank you again for all of this. It's, it's kind of mind-boggling to see all the different things that are going on in such a small school system. I think that every time we have one of these presentations. All right, just one small clarifying question when I was looking. I'm glad to hear that the, the leadership team is still meeting. I'm wondering if those minutes, I looked on the Equity website, they're still just from like, 2020. So are, I'm, I'm glad to hear you're meeting, so the minutes will be updated at some point?
Tomorrow, sure.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you. And I also have never been able to figure out how to find the Equity Observer beyond, like, online anywhere? Is that, are those issues published somewhere online?
They're not on the website, but it is something like, Mary Beth and I have talked about getting them on the website. I'll do that tomorrow, too.
Great, thank you. And then my final question, if I can remember it, I knew I should have written it down. Oh, the Family Resource Center, I think it's such an exciting resource, and I'm glad to hear you say that, that the liaison is busy, you know, throughout the week, which is fantastic. I'm just curious if we are track, if we have any data on that resource center, like, how many families we serve, or how often, or what, if there's any way we could share with the board or with the community, like, in a, in a data way, in a quantitative way, like, what the Resource Center is doing? Because I know it's doing fabulous work, but I couldn't, I couldn't articulate that to a community member if they asked.
We can definitely do that. So some of it would, would certainly be beneficial to be qualitative and understand like, the type of things that they're doing, but we can definitely quantify as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Teich just gave you a nice to-do list for tomorrow, Dr. Santiago.
I was like, I don't really have a lot of meetings tomorrow, but... I was like, I don't really have a lot of meetings tomorrow, but now I have things to do all day.
And I might offer if, that might be, that might be something that we would include in our Equity Report as opposed to, because whenever I think about it, I don't know, is that, would it be most appropriate to have it in an update to the board, an Equity Update or, you know, an ESOL update that Dr. Santiago may, may do? Or in our annual Equity Report? And so especially when we start, when we talk about the data piece, because we know that's something that we want to include in that, that report, not just the student performance data, like we said, but also our recruitment and, and retention data. We could also look at our exit interviews and some of the, the input and feedback we received from folks who have exited and to your, your requests as well that might fit nicely in that report.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I'm thinking in terms of the Family Resource Center, both from a community engagement perspective, like I would love to be able to tell the community specifically what, what the Resource Center does, or especially if I were to find a family who I think would benefit from the resource, I want to make sure that I have an accurate understanding of what they do. So if I'm pointing them in that direction, that I'm on, I'm on base there. And then of course, from a budgeting perspective, I know last year we had added the .5, which I was fully in support of, but it would be nice to kind of have some data to support that in case we need to go down to 1.0 or go up to 2.0 or whatever, as that, as the, as the position evolves or as the center evolves, it would be nice to have some, some more info on that. So thank you. Sorry for the to-do list, but.
Well, I love a to-do list, so it's great. But I also was, I can, I can write something up for Dr. Noonan's weekly notes about like the things that the Family Resource Center does also.
That would be great. I know when I was PTA president, it wasn't clear kind of what was under the Family Resource Center versus what was under the social workers? And I know they work, they work well together and that was beautiful. I just wasn't sure if there was a clear delineation that, or if it's just kind of.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The only comment I had, and this is not to put anyone on the spot or to be decided on tonight, but, you know, as I was reading this presentation and thinking about some of the things that's, have happened while, while Dr. Dimick and I at least have been on the board, I'm, you know, there's, and actually, actually the whole board, I, you know, I look back at some of the changes we made with the calendar, removing the religious holidays, the incident at Meridian. And, you know, one of the things, and there have been other incidents, you know, incidents here and there over the years. And, you know, the one thing that, that is clear is that, you know, the community members want to talk to me and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. And it just really strikes me that the community wants to be part of the solution and how can they help? And I know that I sat on your ESOL Advisory Committee and we have a host, a number of advisory committees. And I've been thinking about, you know, is it time to really look at maybe a DEI Advisory Committee? Now, I know that you already, and I'm not pointing anyone on the spot, you don't need to, I'm just throwing this out as food for thought. And I know that, you know, Dr. Noonan is very protective of the staff's time, which I understand too. So, you know, and we do have ESOL, so I don't know if it maybe is something to think about, maybe expanding the mission of that committee to include more than just ESOL? Or is it another, is there maybe an advisory committee that we could have community members be part of this so that when, God forbid, another incident might happen at Meridian, we have a group ready to go of, of community members who can really dig in deep? So again, don't, just something to think about. And yes, Dr. Santiago, yes.
So I did not mention, on their Equity DLT, we do have a community member on that. Christine Lee Buckholz is on that. And so she comes to that with a frame of like welcoming Falls Church and as a mom and as a community member. And so one of the roles that she plays in that is like making connections back out to the community as how they can support the DLT work and the division work. So there is kind of some community, but not in an advisory.
Right, okay. Well, maybe we can talk about or think about that some more. And that's good, I didn't even realize that. So that's good, good to know. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you. This has been a great conversation, very informative, and we look forward to our, the, I guess we'll call it the Annual Report or Equity, Annual Equity Report. And in the spring and then also another update in the fall. So thank you very much for that presentation this evening. It's been, been great and great to see the strides we've made. And, you know, we know that it's only, you know, upwards from here and that we've, we've got some more work to do, but we've made a lot of progress. So thank you both very much. Okay, we're going to move on now to section four of our agenda, public hearing number one on the budget. And section 4.01, public hearing in accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members and for the record. Ms. Goodell, did we have anyone signed up for the public hearing on the budget?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goodell. Okay, we're now at agenda item number five, work session number one on the budget. And section 5.01, FY 2024 Budget Questions and Answers. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Downs. This evening we have 16 budget questions that have been answered following the presentation that was presented on Tuesday night at the budget. Want to take just another opportunity to thank Kristin Michael and Michelle Kopic and William Bates for helping participate in some of the drafting of these responses along with, with the team. In the past, what we have done is we have not gone question by question and read the answers, but rather gone question by question, say, anybody have any, any, any questions based on the information that has been shared? And tonight I think we'll do that same process. We'll just, we'll go question at a time. If you have any questions to follow up based on what's been written, we're certainly happy to help answer those or clarify. But the questions then will be published on the web, on our, on our budget page. So again, maintaining transparency of the budget as we move through. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristin Michael for the presentation.
Thank you so much. As we're starting to pull these up on the screen, I'll go ahead and get started and we'll have them up on the screen in just a second. So the first question was related to revenue forecast from the general government at various points during the budget process. So we reached out to our colleagues at the general government and they provided us with a chart that showed for each fiscal year, what was the revenue projection in December, March, if there were any changes to the tax rate and then what their final adopted budget. Any questions on question one? All right. Chair, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So just help me with these numbers here. So we were told in, we were told in December of last year it would be a 2.5 increase?
I'm just making the chart just a smidge bigger on the screen.
Okay.
Thinking that will help us.
So we're at FY 24. This budget is FY 24.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. So last year we were given the guidance of 6.7%.
Okay.
And the year prior, 2.5%, 3.1% prior and 2.0% prior to that.
So last year at this, kind of at this moment in time, since we're only in January, but when we got the information from city council, we were told 4.2. A year ago, we were told 6.7 and in actuality it turned into an 8.4.
Because in March, we got a revised projection
Yep.
of 15%. And so what the council did at that time was made reductions to the tax rate for homeowners, taking it down by, what was that, nine cents? Essentially a nine cent reduction was turned back to the homeowners, which left us at a lesser percentage. And so we ended up, our total adopted budget was 8.1%. However, the final guidance from the, from the council was slightly less than that.
So what, what I believe that she's done on this chart in terms of putting this together is they looked at what was all of their general fund tax revenues on this chart, right? So when they look at, it's just what tax revenues are they getting in their general funds? So excluding tax revenues for special items that are in enterprise funds, say stormwater, other rates like that. And they included what they projected in December, as Dr. Noonan indicated, what that projection got revised to in March. So last year you could see it went up significantly by March. Then if the council took an action to reduce the tax rate, which they did, and then that last number isn't our adopted budget, it's their adopted budget increase in revenue as compared to their prior year's adopted budget.
Not that you can foreshadow the future.
We're hopeful.
But.
I see where you're going.
Do you envision, you know, we're told 4.2, which is half of last year's guidance. Do you envision this to, to be up or down?
I, I don't want to answer. I, I do think we're in an inflationary environment and that makes me nervous to think that it would go up. So I, I'm not getting, I'm not hopeful
Okay.
that it's going to go up.
Okay.
We'll say that. If it does, great, we'll take it.
Right, I just like to, you know, it's, you know, getting money on, on the back end of a budget is always a little frustrating.
It's totally frustrating. And, and we do have a commitment from the, from the city manager that he will do his very best to give us the, the revenue forecast upfront so that we can make our adjustments on the front end.
And, and I don't mean to imply that, that everyone's not working with the best facts that they have at the time.
Gotcha.
But yes, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on number one? Okay. Question number two is related to parental leave. So we received a multiple number of questions from parental leave and other topics. And what we did when we answered these questions is we reflected all of the different questions that we received on parental leave and we then referred back if we felt another question answered. So for example, when we get to question number nine, we're going to be referring back to parental leave. And then we do have another, if the question on parental leave was different, which you'll see farther on in terms of who's included, that response is separate and we'll get to that. Okay, if there are no questions, I'll move on to question number three, which is related to contract length changes.
I'll have, I just have a comment for this. So this is a question I submitted. And I just wanted to make it clear, the, the individuals in these two positions that I cited are fantastic, but I also think, you know, someday unfortunately they will leave us and I think it makes the positions, our ability to attract stronger candidates if those position, those contracts are, are lengthened. So it's not, the, the people in there are fabulous, but it's also, I think, looking forward to that that makes it, you know, someday will easier to attract other people for those two positions.
Yes, and as part of the compensation study, they're looking at contract lengths for all positions.
Great, thank you.
So moving on to question number four, which is about state compensation funding? Any questions on compensation funding from the state? Question five was related to employees that are at the top of the salary scale or the highest salary for each lane.
Ms. Silverman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Do other jur, neighboring jurisdictions, I know that you mentioned them, that they have limits on their steps as well? Do you know, and I'm assuming we're going to get that information with the compensation study, but do we know offhand just if, if they are much higher or lower?
So when you look, when we look at salary scales, each salary scale has a beginning step and an ending step, right? And the compensation study is going to look at not only what is the salary at the beginning step and what is the salary at the ending step, but how many steps there are in total? Each jurisdiction in this area is using, this is called a step and grade system. It's tremendously common in education in this region. This is the predominant method. One division had stepped away from it and actually came back because they found it was very difficult in terms of explaining it to employees and that comparability. So it's very common. And SEGA will tell us when we look at not only each of our scales, but the different lanes on the scales, how many steps the other jurisdictions have. So that will be included in our analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to question six, which is about advanced academics.
Ms. Silverman.
Thank you again, Chair. So I'm still learning a lot about what this, the new position, the 0.5 position is doing and kind of where we were in the past with advanced academics and where we're heading. Can you, I don't, I guess this question goes to Dr. Noonan. Principal Doherty had adjusted the, the current advanced academic teacher schedule to provide more time on Wednesdays. Can you explain how frequently that happens and how much time they're getting? And so, I mean, basically what I was trying to look for with my question here was, will this new position allow for the same amount of instruction that they were, that identified students were getting previously? And I, I kind of feel like the, the answer didn't quite get at the question I was asking. So I'm wondering if that Wednesday situation does rectify that.
So the short Wednesdays is when the gifted and talented advanced academic teacher at Oak Street is picking up extra time that was lost in the pullout for those students that were identified. That started last week. I, I don't know minute for minute if it's exactly the same, but it is more contact than it was previously insofar as they're, they're doing it on short Wednesdays. The, the questions about the, the .5 advanced academic teacher addition to the .5 that we put in last year and how that will be purposed really is a site-based decision by the principal. If that principal wants to, and the Oak Street principal wants, and we're only talking about Oak Street here, right? Just to make sure we're, we're all clear. So if, if the Oak Street principal wants to utilize that position to do other kinds of instructional programming with kids, that's an option that would be available to the, to the principal. However, as, as we understand, it will be really important to communicate that effectively between now and moving forward. But I don't anticipate a whole lot of change with the current process that's in place with some of the pullouts. I do think that the position that will become a 1.0 position will be halftime sort of administrative, professional development, doing some testing, probably picking up a couple of, of the activities that are associated with our Gifted and Talented Program or Advanced Academic Program. And then half of that position would be direct services to students. So again, that'll be a conversation we'll have with the principal at Oak Street going forward.
And yes, that is a, a site-based decision that, that I would fully anticipate that Principal Doherty can implement herself. But on our end, on what, what the school board is tasked to do with the budget is just to make sure that it's adequately funded. And so, you know, given that part is in our purview, I did want to see, you know, if this 0.5 was sufficient in order to, to bring back the, the type of instruction they, they had been receiving previously. And if it is not sufficient, then maybe a 1.0 would need to be considered, which again is in the board's purview.
If, if the plan were to put it back exactly the way it was, .5 is far more than adequate to do that. I think the, the broader conversation that we need to have as a, as a team is what is the right model for advanced academic instruction for students? And I think it's a combination of factors. And I think that this .5 gives us the opportunity to provide the push-in and it also provides us the opportunity to do the pullout as needed. So again, I don't anticipate that there would be any changes in the pullout from what we're, what we're providing now. But what I do anticipate was, is that it would give us more opportunity to do some push-in with some other students that can be identified as advanced academics as well.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head that this is part of a larger conversation of, of, I guess, how, you know, I'm not the education expert, but how we approach, you know, educating the identified children.
True. But I, I will say as the educational leader of the division, this is sufficient funding to run that advanced academic program at Oak Street.
Okay, to run the model that, that you had just spoken of.
Either way, either way.
So it's, it's sufficient to have, to go back to where identified students were a year ago, the 0.5 would be sufficient to have the pullout for one hour a week?
The .5 is sufficient to do that.
I'm sorry, the, the .5?
No, no, the .5 this year is sufficient to do that. We, we don't need to add any more staffing to the advanced academic to be able to provide exactly what students had last year. The, the difference is that we, we made a change in the model so that students are getting both push-in and pull-out. So. both push-in and pull-out. So if we wanted to go, if we wanted to completely revert back to exactly the way things were last year, we don't need any additional staffing. The additional staffing that's in here is to help buoy up and sort of make the program more robust at Oak Street so that we get both the push-in and the pull-out.
I love the push-in idea. I think that's great for all children, all students. But I do understand the point of view of some where the pullout is needed for their kids.
Yes, Dr. Ortiz.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Ms. Silverman. Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for explaining the differences. I really think that this is, understanding that, I think the key takeaways that I'm taking from this discussion are, the resources that are proposed in the budget are sufficient for a number of different approaches to providing advanced academic or gifted instruction. I think the question before the board, and if that's the case, I mean, I'm kind of pretty comfortable with the way that it's framed, at least just in terms of a number of FTEs. I think this broader conversation about the best model for the students is something that the board should have, and I'd kind of advocate that we figure out time to have that. You know, and there's obviously a lot of things we have to talk about, but I think it's important for us to have that discussion publicly.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Anything else on this question? Yes, Vice Chair Gould.
Yeah, and I think, I know we're crossing, you know, boundaries of operations and governance in some degree. And I think we're also talking about how, as Dr. Ortiz mentioned, how programmatically this should be delivered. I think the one thing I would challenge us all to think about in terms of providing services for gifted education, as well as respecting the public comments that were received, is the fact that students that are, there is a significant issue with the identification process of gifted children that I think has historically been a problem for, across education school districts, not just ours, around how students are identified as gifted, and that created bias in the selection process, which has created a significant criticism around the equity of gifted programs. So I would challenge us to make sure that we think about that as a possibility of review of how gifted children are identified, and make sure that is up to date, and have a discussion, as Dr. Ortiz has mentioned, about making sure that we're also addressing, are we providing the right services for gifted children? I think there is a national debate around pull-in and push-in services. And I think if we clarify about what our model is, I think then we can go back to the budget and make sure we budget this appropriately. I think for my purpose and for my experience in education, pullout is significantly, has been shown to be a model that does work, that is effective, and it doesn't create an exclusive or an elitist system. And so if that is the case, and if that is a supported board position or operational decision, then yes, we would have to address that now, so we don't have to wait another year to try to make sure that we're addressing and serving our gifted children appropriately. So I think there's a lot of levels to this. I think, obviously, I know we're trying to focus this on a budget question, but I think this is pertinent to some degree. And I don't know how we handle what Dr. Ortiz mentioned, is how do we have a working session around this while we're trying to fit through budget questions at the same time. But I'll let Chair Downs figure that out.
Well, how about Vice Chair Gould? You and I will follow up with Dr. Noonan and figure out what the best next steps are to continue the conversation. I feel like the absence of a bigger work session or discussion right now, it seems like the consensus on the board is that we agree that there should be push-in to give that opportunity to all students. But we also agree that our gifted students should go back to the one hour per week pullout, I think, is what I'm getting from everyone I see, head nods. Now, this is, you know, I know that-
I actually don't necessarily concur at this stage. I mean, I think, you know, I think that-
You'd like more information.
...the budget discussion, I think, I agree with Dr. Noonan and the team and everybody else that what's in the, what's proposed in the budget is sufficient for multiple different kinds of models and provides a certain amount of flexibility. I don't necessarily need to be the person making that decision, but I want to make sure that it's been well considered and discussed.
Right, that's right. So we'll follow up on that, Vice Chair Gould, and I will talk with Dr. Noonan and figure out next steps for the conversation. But this is a very good, helpful conversation. So thank you.
I'll also, just to respond to Chair Gould's comment about the significant issue-
Vice Chair.
Pardon me.
You got promoted!
Vice Chair Gould about the significant issues around identification. You know, one of the things that we have been working on recently and has changed substantively, I think, in the last several years, is identification to pull in more students that are, that lack representation in the process. So for example, we used to only do the COGAT assessment as the screener for the gifted program, in addition to some other portfolio-type aspects. And several years ago, we instituted the NEGLIARY, which is a nonverbal assessment that brings in kids that it's not straight IQ. You can also now do the NEGLIARY, and we're seeing more ESOL kids, we're seeing more representation of students of color in particular, based on that NEGLIARY, and then a more portfolio-processed approach to advanced academics. So I think we're beginning to get at the resolution around some of the issues of screening and identification. And I do think, you know, just to sort of say it one more time, the addition of the 0.5 advanced academics teacher gives us an option of providing lots of different services for kids. And I'll just double down on what I said before, and that is, if you want to just put back what was there last year, don't fund this 0.5, because we have the staffing to put back what we had last year. And I think to a great extent, we've done that with the short day Wednesdays. What I'm excited about is expanding our advanced academic program to look at pulling in even more kids that are capable of doing the work. Because one of the things we know is that regardless of what happens, you know, with kids, is if you raise the bar and set it and support them to get there, they'll get there in every single way. And by the time they get to middle school, they're all leveled out anyway, because they're either going to go into honors or they're going to go into standard, and then they're going to head into honors and IB. And the only place that we see this disparity among who gets pulled out and who doesn't get pulled out is at Oak Street to the greatest extent. So I think what we'd like to do is try to solve for some of that, and the 0.5 gives us an opportunity to do it.
Dr. Dimick.
This is my questions for next week, but I'm going to put it here since you said you mentioned, sort of, if we raise the bar, we can bring students to it. I would really love to see as many students brought to one-year above grade level in math when they enter middle school as possible. To me, the only way to equitably provide access to the IB diploma for students to not have to concurrently take two math classes in 10th grade, and for students to not have to take a summer school class, is to get them started at Henderson at 7th grade math. That's the only way, without doing extra math, that you can have a kid access that diploma program. So I would, I'd like to lift them all up. We should get them all to Henderson.
I'd love to be able to do that as well. And I think we do everything we can to make that happen. I think kids mature at different levels with mathematics instruction. It's not a concrete sequential way of thinking. It's very abstract, particularly when you get into algebra and the like, and kids mature differently that way. So one of the things that we added into the Friday note to the school board last week is that there are multiple pathways. If you're a standard-level student in middle school or even elementary school to get to the diploma program. And one of the things that I talked with Jen Fessenden about last week is, you know, once the SOLs are over, we can actually start during the school year, the next sequence of course during the school year, so that kids can begin that journey in an online, standards-based approach where they'll be able to move through the content quickly if they want to accelerate. But it is, you know, it is a challenge, and it's a trade-off. But all of our kids who want to achieve the diploma program can achieve the diploma program if they follow a sequence to get there. But I do want to be careful about saying we want all kids to be above grade level, or as many kids as possible to be above grade level by the time they leave elementary school, because we do have some kids that just take more time to mature in mathematics instruction.
Thank you. I guess, I appreciate that, and I hear you that some kids need more time than others. But to me, that doesn't mean we shouldn't really try.
I think we're trying every day, to be fair. I think, I think we, that's the other thing, that this 0.5 addition would give us an opportunity to dig a little deeper into some of the math instruction as well. Because we do want to try. But abstract thinking in mathematics is a challenge, particularly for kids in 5th, 6th grade.
Dr. Dimick, I'll just echo Dr. Dimick, because you and I have had this conversation with many, many community members. And actually, someone came to our office hours last time, our last office hours about this. I think there's a communications piece to it that a lot of, and Dr. Noonan, you and I have talked about this as well. And I know that you're working on, you know, making sure that parents understand. But there is a communication piece with this and helping parents understand what the math piece, how that fits in with the IB diploma. And I think, you know, in my opinion, it does, it starts at Oak Street and before MEH, you know, getting that word out and, you know, helping students, if that's something that they, you know, that they really want to aspire to, you know, before learning in 7th grade, oh, you're going to have to take a summer course. So I think, you know, maybe it's a much bigger conversation. I think it could actually be a work session in and of itself in terms of this math piece with IB diploma. And, you know, is there something that we can do? For students who want to give a go, want to have some extra time, maybe in 5th grade, to try to, you know, bump up their math skills while they're still at Oak Street, I don't know. But that's a much bigger discussion for another time and could have some budget implications. Yes, Ms. Tice?
I will say, just to follow on with that, I'm sorry, Ms. Tice, Jen Fessenden is currently scheduling a math night for Oak Street
Okay.
this spring. So there'll be a lot of information out there for parents to show just how you can achieve the IB diploma, even if you're not an above-grade-level math student coming out of Oak Street.
Okay, great. That's great to know. Thank you.
I hate to put a lot of work so far off our original topic, but I just wanted to chime in that I just wholeheartedly agree with all three of you, or everyone who's chimed in here. I think it's all really important valid points. I think that the new website with the walkthrough and the voiceover of the math options was fantastic. I thought it was so clear. I've been wanting that forever. I'm not asked for it, but I've been, in my brain, wanting that forever. And to see it appear was really helpful. And I think it's a really rich discussion. I think, I think both things are so true that we should be, and we are, and we should continue to be pushing, you know, any kid who has the ability and the opportunity to go as far as they can in math at the earlier years. Because it does, for those who can access it, if there's anyone on the bubble that we can get over the bubble, it's just that gives them that many more options in the secondary world, right, without having to do concurrent math or to do summer school. I also totally agree with Dr. Noonan that that's not going to be appropriate or possible for every student. And I think the last thing we want to do is put undue pressure on families and students to feel bad that they're not at above grade level. The whole point is, you should be excited if you are able to be on grade level. That's the whole point of calling it on grade level, right? So I don't want to take it too far and have there be any sort of undue pressure or stress on kids at 5th and 6th and 7th grade, because there are options. So I guess I just am echoing Chair Downs' point, that this communication piece, like, if we could just shout this conversation from the rooftops to the parents and the families who are stressed about math, that, yes, let's work as hard as we can for those bubble kids, but yes, let's, you know, there are other options, and let's not be stressed if you can't do it. But let's double down when and how we can. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Ms. Michael, I am sorry, somehow we veered all the way into curriculum, but we're coming back now to budget. Okay, here we come.
All right. Question number seven was regarding responsive classroom training. Question number eight was regarding the position reductions, and could we accomplish them with attrition?
One clarification there. I think it was a 3rd grade teacher.
Yes, the 3rd grade teaching position is currently not filled. So that one will be super easy to accomplish the attrition because the position is currently vacant. So when we look at their current 3rd grade enrollment, based on the number of students they had, and to ensure we were meeting the school board ratio for class size, we only needed eight of the nine budgeted positions. So we didn't fill that ninth position this school year, right? So that one will be super easy, because the enrollment next year also calls for eight teachers, not nine. Question number nine was about parental leave and who is eligible, including birth and adoption.
Yes, Ms. Silverman. I just really want to applaud the efforts to include, to have a very expansive view on what used to be known as maternity leave, is now known as parental leave, now encompasses adoption, now encompasses a lot of things. So, thank you.
And I, just to piggyback on that, I thought the previous, I think it was Vice Chair Gould's question, I thought that was really clear and interesting. Is that, has, well, assuming everything goes forward and we approve this, that will all then be, all those details will be provided to the staff?
Correct. All of this information will end up being in the policy, the leave policy.
Okay, I thought it was very, very clear and easy to understand. So thank you for that. Yes, please, Vice Chair Gould.
More of a one-on-one question. I'm going to go back to question one and tie it, which is the parental leave. All right, I think it was question one. I'm sorry, question two. So the calculation, so FMLA is the, it's a federal law that allows for 12 weeks unpaid, and you don't lose your position.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And so are we saying that if they want to combine different options, let's say the six weeks that we would be offering, plus any sick leave, and I was processing this today, does that mean they have to take all that within a 12-week period as designated by FMLA? Or could they add FMLA on top of the six weeks and the sick leave and FMLA?
So they run concurrently, which means you're only eligible for that 12 weeks of leave. Of that 12 weeks of FML leave, six weeks of it can be paid using this family leave. The leave itself doesn't have to all be together, right? Many times, we have employees who take turns in terms of the parental leave with their spouse. So it doesn't have to be sequential, but it's not, you get 12 weeks of FML plus another six weeks of parental leave.
Plus X number of weeks with their paid leave, their paid sick leave.
Correct. All of that is wrapped into that 12-week FML period.
What's the rationale behind that? I mean, I imagine that would be a significant amount of time for a position, and we would have to fill, I'm not trying to answer for you, but I mean, that was my guess on that.
Yes, it is a significant amount of time for a position. We also look at what fits within the FML law. So it fits very well in terms of that federal policy, in terms of it being concurrent. And it's also very consistent with what other employers are doing. And most importantly, it was consistent with the general government's policy. So they have a parental leave policy, and all of their leave like that must be concurrent with the FML period. So consistency with that was probably our highest priority in terms of looking at that.
Okay. And then the parental leave overall.
Yeah.
In terms of alignment with the general government's parental leave, how closely aligned are our policies? Almost directly aligned, or are they loosely aligned? What's your-
So this would directly align. They previously had parental leave, and then they expanded it to six weeks. So I do believe this would perfectly align us in terms of that benefit.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the next question after parental leave, was sick leave payout? So are there any questions on how we calculated what that cost estimate was? After sick leave payout, the next question was advanced academics, and it just refers back to the previous question. Question 12 was also regarding the position reduction, so we did refer back to that previous question that was asked.
Do you mind just, since I wasn't able to process this today and we got it, can you just answer question 12 then? So from my reading, we had cuts, significant cuts in two of the classes, in students, but then we had increases in students in two other classes. We're not concerned with any staffing ratios then by removing teachers, but still having increases in students?
That's correct. So included in the budget document, we have position summaries that show all of our positions at schools, as well as the school board staffing ratios. And then we have enrollment by each grade level. So what we do as part of the budget development process is we take our projections from Weldon Cooper by grade level. We look at, based on the school board staffing formulas, those ratios, how many teachers would be required at each grade level. So we're sure that with these reductions, we're still in line with that. What you see here in terms of that first grade position is our incoming kindergarten classes have been smaller, right? So as we see a smaller kindergarten class moving up, the projections for first grade is lower. Should our first grade students come in higher than is projected, right, we will adjust that and then hire additional position. We have the staffing reserve, which does have that position. We have a position in that that will allow us to ensure that if we need to, we'll add an additional position to ensure we're maintaining those class size ratios up by the school board.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Question 13 was how we costed parental leave. Question 13 was how we costed parental leave? Okay, and then question 14 was regarding the grocery tax and the loss of the grocery tax and the cold, harmless funding from the state. And then question 15 was advanced academics, so we referred back to a previous question, and then question 16 was also related to the position reductions, so we tied back as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You just, school staffing ratios, so student-to-teacher ratios, what are our ratios?
So, we have a different ratio for kindergarten, first, and second grade, which is no more than 22 students per teacher at-
On average.
On average, thank you. She's already opened them. It's policy 6.5. We also do have them in that budget document. For the upper elementary grades, it shifts up to 24 students per teacher. On average.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Ms. Michael and Ms. Kopic, for these great answers to our questions, and as you can see, we see the budget as not just, you know, I think all of us look at, look at, the budget is more just numbers, we really see how it affects our personnel and our academics, and so I think that's why we, these conversations sometimes tend to get bigger, so I appreciate your patience with us, Ms. Michael, and again, thank you for those really informative answers and Ms. Kopic as well. And then, again, if you all can, what's the deadline for the next set of questions?
It would be great if we could get them, let's see, our next meeting, we do have a little bit of time here.
Yeah, we do.
Our next meeting is Valentine's Day, February 14.
Yeah, February 14. So, what do you, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're so excited to spend-
I know. In general, if we can have them a week before, it's great. The sooner you get them to us, we'll continue to work on them, right? And if we get them earlier, we always do try to post them the week before the board meeting, so it's always helpful if we have them.
Yeah, now we'll get into a cadence of that. This one, this one came up pretty quickly, so if you can get them to us a week before, that'd be great.
And then that would mean we would get the budget documents or the question answers when then? If the-
You would get them at the next work session.
For us to review?
So, I think, so we would have a couple days before, so they would come to us?
Yes, if you can get them to us a week before, we'll try to complete them by that Friday so that they can be posted over the weekend. This one was just a quick turnaround, and we couldn't get them out, so.
Okay. So, if everyone can try to get their budget questions in by February 7th, and then by that Friday, we'll have the answers, and you'll have all weekend and Monday and Tuesday to review. So, this was, this one was a tight turnaround because we had these back-to-back meetings two weeks in a row, which is unusual for us, so. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to now section, agenda item 6, materials for board review, and you'll see the report there, and that's for your board review. And we are now going to move into closed meeting, we're at section 7 on the agenda. If someone, we're at 7.01, if someone could read us into closed, please? Yes, Vice Chair Gould?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purposes, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, legal matters under section 2.2-371188, in particular consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. All those in favor say yes, yes. All those opposed say no? Okay, we are moving into closed, and this is going to be a lengthy closed session, so we will probably, for anyone watching, our guests, we will probably say good evening to you, because we will not be coming back out of closed for quite a while, well over an hour. So, again, thank you to our, to our public comment speakers this evening, our school board candidates, we really appreciate you being here, and thank you to staff and those who are watching.